I'd like to welcome everyone to council meeting this evening. Recognize that all members of the council are present. We excuse Kathy tonight. She's actually on vacation, so if you've seen her running in and out of the room, just pretend like she's not here. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Drew Armstrong, and opening remarks will be offered by Molly Andrew.
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are so grateful to be here tonight and to be able to discuss the things that are important to this community. Father in Heaven, we are grateful for everything that you have given us. We are grateful for this land. We are grateful for the freedoms that we have. We're grateful for the opportunity to be able to express ourselves and be able to convey the message that we want. Help, Heavenly Father, help us to be kind, help us to have a good heart, and help us to be honest in our dealings. We love thee. We're so grateful for thee, and we are grateful for everything that we have. We ask thee to watch over and protect those serving the military. Bless them with peace and safety, and bless those public safety employees that protect us and protect our city. We ask for their safety too, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We have a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. I'm going to read them. Item 9A, you should have an amended agenda or changed agenda. That one's going to be continued to the 15th. 9B is also continued to the 15th. 10B is the mayor, not Mayor Pro Tem, because that was probably going to happen last week. And it is going to be continued to the 9th. And then C and D we are going to have tonight. Ivory Holmes is here. Item E will be continued to the 9th, and the rest of the agenda remains the same.
With an executive session.
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you for legal reasons.
Where are we going to put the executive session?
I think it just needs to be between 16 and 17.
So I'll entertain a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make...oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought we were going to try and move 10C and D to take the place of 9A and B.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight with said changes to move items 10C and D in place of 9A and B, with the executive session as, we'll say, 16B.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. All right, we're going to have an open session. Open session is for the public to speak on an item that is not a public hearing or that's not on the agenda. If you want to get up and express something to the public, and go ahead and state your name and address.
You don't have to do address anymore.
Name and address and vague description of your street.
Really? Okay.
I need to stand on my tippy toes? Okay.
You can pull it down.
Well, it doesn't bend.
Tip.
That one?
Yep.
Okay. 1380 East, 150 North, Onagalli, the worst road in Pleasant Grove, as you all know. I have a couple examples here of a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Illinois exemplifies our fiscal foolishness. They...I...Illinois government says it's run for the benefit of its employees. Increasingly, it is run for their benefit when they retire pension promises, though unfunded by at least...well, anyway, Illinois is going into problems because they're just spending all the money on their employees. And this is another one that says Puerto Rico's financial crisis. Of course, this is what I'm talking about, is financial crisis, because I, being my age maybe, I worry about overspending. And that's why you have your bread, that's forty, at least forty-eight years old wheat. And they've told me it's still good. So that's why this is an example of frugality. I have many things to say, and I hope I can do it in what's all I got left? Well, anyway. I think that we spent, overspent on foolish things, and I know sometimes we like to be able...it makes us feel good to be able to have nice things. But it also makes us feel good to spend money wisely. And if we go into debt again and increase the taxes on people, I worry about people my age who will live on social...who are going to maybe lose their homes if their taxes are increased, because taxes are increased all the time, the state, the city, the national government. And we know we're going to have problems next year when the election's over. So I think we need to be very frugal and very careful and be wise in making decisions on making the use of the buildings. Since we've spent thousands of dollars on checking the structure, why not use the buildings? I think we can figure it out. My house is over forty-two years old. The police station is how old, twenty? I don't see anything wrong with that being remodeled. Move the city employees into another building. We can do this if we want to be frugal and not overspend. And I know another thing. I know sometimes Sid gets after me for criticizing, but Lower Road was under construction all summer long, and I know it was being critical. But you stop and think, how many years has I been on a bad road? Much longer than a summer. Okay, that's all I can say.
Thanks, Donna. Would anyone else like to address the council? All right, seeing none, we'll close the open session. On the consent items, there's no minutes, but we do have the paid vouchers. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. If the following individuals are here, if they could please stand and just maybe come up to the microphone. We're considering for appointment of Jaleen McFarland...did I say that correctly? Jaleen McFarland, Karen Harbold, and Jean Holdaway as members of the Historic Preservation Committee. Are you here? If you could please stand? Okay. Any discussion, council?
Just one quick question. Is there a reason we're replacing three at the same time? Is this a...
I think on this one and on downtown, they're actually adding members. I don't think there's a replacement on this one.
Okay.
Now, that's my recollection, if anybody knows differently.
I think there's quite a few go off recently.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion if there's no other discussion.
I interviewed them, enjoyed all three of them, great backgrounds, definite contributions.
Yeah, awesome. Mayor, council, I move that we appoint Jaleen McFarland, Karen Harbold, and Jean Holdaway as Historic Preservation Committee members.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Ben, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, and we'll catch you next time. All right, we're going to have, which is required by law, we're going to have arguments. This is also a public hearing, is it not?
It's not classified as a public hearing, Mayor. The statute requires a public...
It's not classified as a public hearing. The stat...
It's not a public meeting.
It's not working.
Oh, there you go.
A meeting wherein we provide reasonable time for arguments to be presented pro and con.
Okay. So I'm going to let Scott introduce the item, and then we'll go over the ground rules.
So on the voter information pamphlet that you received a couple weeks ago, per state law, again, the city, the governing body, is required to write a pro argument in favor of the bond. Any resident of Pleasant Grove can write a con argument. And so we...so Tina Peterson, representing the city, wrote the pro argument, and then the con argument was written by Blaine Thatcher. And then, once those arguments are submitted, each group gets to write a rebuttal. So for tonight, I think it'd be appropriate if Tina read the pro argument, Blaine read the con argument, and then Tina can read the city rebuttal, and Blaine can read his...the rebuttal with him and his group. And then at that point, we'd recommend that we just open it up for public comment and handle it like a regular public hearing and have people give three minutes on their thoughts, in particular to the bond.
All right. Tina?
Mayor and council, this is the official pro statement of the city regarding the bond proposal that is on the November 8th ballot.
I'd just tweak that towards your mouth. Thank you.
How's that? Is that better?
Thank you.
The citizens of Pleasant Grove overwhelmingly recognize the need for new public safety facilities. A citizen committee has spent the last year and a half studying the issues and vetting the options. The committee has proposed solutions to the problem, including a recommendation to bond for a specific amount to pay a portion of the cost of the new public safety facilities. Through this process, it has become evident that the current buildings have reached a point that additions or repairs can no longer be justified as fiscally responsible. City Council unanimously approved a resolution asking voters to authorize issuance of general obligation bonds to finance the construction of new public safety facilities, which will house fire, police, dispatch, and the justice court. Our fire station was built in 1949 as an addition to the old public high school. It was converted to a fire station in 1989, when the population of the city was 11,000, and we had a volunteer fire department. We now have a full-time fire department and fire and EMS department servicing over 38,500 people. There are serious concerns with the current building, as it does not meet seismic safety standards. This seventy-five-year-old structure is inadequate for day-to-day operations and could be destroyed in a seismic event, leaving the citizens without emergency services. Our police station has outlived its usefulness and functionality as a police facility. It is not in compliance with current regulations for police departments that require heightened security and separation from public access. Prisoner processing and transport facilities are not secure. There is inadequate evidence storage space. Evidence is being stored under stairways and hallways and in an elevator shaft. Interrogation rooms are undersized, lack ventilation, and windows. The booking area is open to dispatch and puts the safety of civilian employees at risk. Our justice court facility is drastically undersized and functionally inadequate. It seats approximately thirty individuals, but fifty to seventy defendants are scheduled to be seen on any given day. People are forced to stand in the lobby until it's their turn. The public safety is compromised, since there is no secure way to transport prisoners. They must be walked through the foyer among the general public. There are no conference rooms. Attorneys confer with their clients, and private information must be discussed in the middle of the lobby. There is insufficient storage space for our court records, and there is no jury deliberation room. The need is clear. The citizens have been heard. The amount of actual debt has been reduced through extensive cost-cutting review and substantial donation commitments from private citizens and local business intended to ease the burden on taxpayers. The bond will not exceed $9.5 million and will increase the average property owner's tax $5.02 per month. The project fulfills needs in four areas that are currently in operational failure and assures functionality both for our present needs and our future growth.
Blaine?
As a city, we have been wrestling for years to meet argued public safety needs. It has been a difficult yet vindicating struggle, as we watched the bond amounts, projected only to increase, diminish from nineteen million to sixteen point nine to fourteen point nine to twelve point six seven, and now nine point five million. We know the vast majority of citizens in Pleasant Grove want to see a solution to the needs of our public safety employees, but one that also respects the demands on family finances. In an effort to bridge the emotional divide, a public safety building committee was created of citizens with drastically different views. One primary goal, as stated by its chosen spokesman, was that a solution be reached, quote, "in a responsible way that would restrain to the greatest extent possible the financial burden on the citizens of our city," close quote. We are grateful for the committee's recognition of the taxpayer and acknowledge their monumental work, resulting in the current bond number reflecting our shared desires for public safety solutions. While the majority of the committee strongly felt the budget could be less, they recommended to the council a bond number and total budget for construction costs. The success or failure of the bond now rests with the council. As citizens of Pleasant Grove, we support fiscal conservative, responsible solutions, full accountability, and transparent government. Therefore, citizens need assurances and specifics from the council about the money they're requesting, your money. The amount represents new money the city is asking for from residents at a time when major infrastructural issues remain to be addressed, including roads and water. The council chooses to fund such needs through the citizenry, steadily raising our secondary and other water fees, proposing a new tax called road fee on each household and business's utility bill to raise $1 million annually for roads. With so many expensive projects to be funded by the citizenry in the near future, will the city council rebuild trust with the citizens and, one, commit to, quote, "a budget set at $11 million or less for construction costs," as unanimously recommended on August 23rd of this year. Two, commit to work hard to reduce the costs of construction, as discussed by the committee. Three, use private donations to actually lower the amount borrowed. Four, specify a location for the building. Five, preserve our beloved and historic old rec center with its cultural and revenue-generating functions. Six, practice open and transparent finances across the city. Seven, be inclusive, giving citizens regular updates on the progress of the buildings and the budgets. Eight, allow meaningful, ongoing citizen input. To date, the council has not addressed these concerns in writing, so we cannot recommend voting for the bond. We encourage citizens to ask these and other questions, seek hard evidence from elected officials, and be confident in the answers received before you vote. Look for results, not rhetoric. It is our money they seek. It is your right to be secure in your vote. Citizens against overspending.
Thank you. And now for the...what do you call this? The response rebuttal? Okay.
The opposition argument focuses on emotion, not facts. It seeks to instill fear and mistrust rather than address the actual bond proposal. The tone is threatening rather than an objective evaluation of the merits of the bond proposal. If the city council will meet all of the opposition's demands, then they would support the bond. Some demands are not even related to the project. The elected body of Pleasant Grove does not make decisions based on threats, and our community should not vote based on fear and the desire to create contention. The facts are that this proposal is based upon professional studies requested by the citizen-driven Public Safety Building Committee, evaluating remodeling options, architectural and engineering costs, pricing related to various locations, and a thorough review of the space and functional needs of the project. The citizens committee unanimously recommended the $9.5 million bond amount as being adequate to meet the public need in a fiscally responsible manner. This proposal is the result of an open, transparent, citizen-initiated recommendation from the PSB Committee that took over sixteen months to study the issue and propose solutions. It is the result of a spirit of cooperation, transparency, and ingenuity by the PSB Committee, the mayor and city council, and staff to meet a dire need in our community with fiscally responsible solutions. This bond proposal has been developed through thorough research and factual information. This proposal is principled, consistent, and affordable for the people of Pleasant Grove.
Blaine?
The city's advocacy piece addresses the need for new public safety facilities. However, it lacks building specifics, and just as an investor requests plan specifics before writing a check, we are requesting plan specifics from the council before voting in November. Citizens would like answers and assurances before being asked for yet another tax increase and entrusting $9.5 million to the council. Linden is currently building at $175 a square foot. Our city proposes building at $245 a square foot. Why won't we consider a new $3 million fire station and a $2 million remodel of police and courts? What percentage property tax increase is this bond proposal? Forty percent? Why can other cities trim budgets and meet their needs at average construction prices? Why will the council not commit to work hard to reduce the cost of this proposal, per committee recommendation? What is the location? Over-triple the space for our police and courts? With these and other unanswered questions, the lack of trust created by prior bond proposals, and a looming new tax to raise roads money, citizens are not ready to move ahead without necessary information. Pleasant Grove is highly indebted and already has one of the highest tax burdens in the county. We are a modest city with modest needs. It is our right and our duty to ask questions about the plan before spending our money. Why overspend? Vote no on this bond, and let's work together for a modest solution to our modest needs. Citizens against overspending.
Thank you. Okay, that's the legal required reading of both the arguments for and then the rebuttals. And now it's time for an open session on this item. If you would like to address the council or address this item, feel free to come up to the microphone, and we don't need your address, just your name. We're going to set the clock for three minutes, and when the buzzer goes off, please be respectful of everyone else's time. So go ahead.
I'm Kurt Jurgens. I came back to Pleasant Grove four weeks ago.
Welcome back.
Spent the time in Australia. Was really curious about this when I came back, because I was somewhat involved earlier and heard nothing while in Australia. I read the proposals, the buzz...the rebuttals, all of that. Personally, I have a lot of questions. I'm involved now, since I got back, in building a commercial building. The lenders of that money have to have specific details before anything can happen. They then require any changes to be approved by them. I don't see that happening with the city. I don't find anything of details of the building. I get concerned when it doesn't even say where it's going to be built, what the plans are, anything about it. I'm not prepared to vote for it personally because of all the questions I have, which should be completely before me, this close to the decision time. So I approve. I appreciate the work that's been done. I appreciate that it's seeing that it is coming down. If I had details of what was going on, I would probably be inclined to vote for it. But there's nothing there showing the citizenry, who are the lenders, what's going on. So, thank you.
My name's Jill Skoy, and I would just like to echo that. When I read the information, I am for creating something for our fire department and our police officers and all of the needs. I totally see that as a need, and I'm happy to support that. The concerns that I had when I read the official ballot was that it said paying for all or a portion of the costs. And so I didn't know, like, where the other money was going to be coming from, and I was concerned that we didn't know exactly how much it was going to be costing. And my other concern was, at the end, how it says that it is not limited to the amount of taxes that the city may be required to levy in order to pay the debt back. So I would just like to know when I'm voting for something, like, how much is it going to cost me? And if the taxes are going to have to be increased to meet that bond, I feel like I should have a voice in that and not have it be an open-ended tax, so that it can be raised at any time without me having a say of whether that would work for me or if I was able to financially do that. So I would just like to echo that I'm for supporting this. I just wish that there was more clear about where the money was all coming from and where it was going, and how much of that, you know, like, what was the cap? And then they'd have to re-vote on raising taxes again to be able to pay for that. Those are my concerns.
Thank you. How do you spell your last name?
S-K-O-Y.
Anyone else?
Jason Hunter, 680 East, 300 North, Pleasant Grove. I was on the Public Safety Building Committee, along with many of my fellow committee members who are here in this room. And we hear the concerns, and we've...we sat through a sixteen-month process where we argued and we debated, and we, I mean, we all realized that, and we came to a realization that these buildings are needed. And we also came to a consensus that this is our money. And what are the roles of government? The primary role of...one of the primary roles of government is the protection of its citizens, to protect life, liberty, and property. What better use of our government funds than to make sure that the police and fire have the tools that they need to do that? I hear about costs of square footage and things, and, you know, the...as I run the numbers, 53,852 square feet divided into $11 million is $204 a square foot. And I don't know where Linden's...if they're really building for 175. Either way, that...those are fairly close numbers, and I think through value engineering, getting an actual architectural plan put together, that those numbers will come down. However, there's no more money in the budgets to put an architectural plan together at this point. And so this bond is, and this process that we're going through, is a preapproval. The council has committed, along with the Public Safety Building Committee, to have this construction cost be $11 million or less. And if donors want to donate money to decrease the cost of that to the taxpayers, then that will be done. But if a donor wants to... But if a donor wants to increase the look of the building or whatever, and they wanna spend their money on that, it goes back to the old saying, never look a gift horse in the mouth, which I had to look that up. Apparently you can tell the age of a horse by its teeth. But, you know, you say thank you, and yeah, we can make a brick, or we can do whatever, because that's money that is not ours to do with. So I would encourage everyone to vote for this. There's been compromises on all sides, and there's been a lot of unanimous votes, and it's time, let's heal this community.
Thank you, Jason.
Sandy Carter. I don't even know if I can get my thoughts straight. My stomach is churning, and I feel really emotional, so I'm just warning you.
Okay, breathe.
Hopefully it'll just be tears and not, you know. I'm really not happy with some of the information that's in this pamphlet. I feel like it's misleading, and I feel like there's no information to back up some of these statements. For example, an increase of forty percent in our property tax. Where does that come from? Where's the information? Where's the statistics? Where's the data? I don't see anything here. I looked at my property tax, and maybe I'm not looking at it correctly, but I looked at actual Pleasant Grove City, it was 16.19%. So I'd like to know how it jumped from, or will possibly jump from, 16.19% to 40%. Where does that number come from? You can't just pick a number out of thin air, stick it on a piece of paper that goes to every citizen and not have information to back it up.
So Sandy, are you referring to the city portion or the rebuttal?
The city, it's right here. What percentage property tax increase?
Was it written by the city or by Mr. Thatcher?
Mr. Thatcher.
Okay.
So I'd like to know where that information is. Why is it not disclosed on here? This is information for all of us to receive, and it needs to be accurate. And if there's a figure there and it's an actual fact, then support the facts. Don't just give an opinion or send out information without backing it up. Does anyone know what Linden is spending per foot?
Yes.
And what is it?
$209 a foot, according to their council minutes.
Okay, so where does 175 square feet come from?
I don't know.
That is just wrong, to put information that's not a little bit incorrect, but really incorrect. It's like apples and oranges, it's just not right. Their city is so much smaller, they're not building police and fire and courts and dispatch. We are. There's a big, big difference. Why does it matter if we're building something three times larger? We're already basically in the deficit. Our buildings are too small. I go to the police station quite often, and it's sickening to me that it's so tiny and so stuffed. If I were a defense attorney, I would highly question the integrity of the evidence kept in a boiler room, for heaven's sakes. How would you like to be a victim and have your evidence in a boiler room? It's not climate-controlled, it's protected, if that's about it, and it's preserved the best they can, but it's just appalling to me. I've been in their lobby, I've been there when court's in session, there is no place for anyone to have privacy. It's amazing to me that someone hasn't gone in there and gone off with a weapon and hurt someone, or just simply assaulted someone. There is no protection. It's a lawsuit waiting to happen. It just makes me angry, there are things in here, they're accusing you of not being specific, they're accusing you of not being transparent, you have bent over backwards to provide transparency, to bust your butts in having a public safety committee who have busted their butts for over sixteen months.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else? You gonna read all of that in three minutes?
I want anybody to think that they don't have the facts to come talk to me, because this is my PSB Bible, and I have all the think, I have all the papers that we have printed from Dropbox, and if they wanna see it, it's here, and if they, maybe that would help them vote.
Molly Andrew.
Molly Andrew, 1125 Sage Drive, thanks. I've been trying to come up with my top ten list, like, you know, all day, trying to figure out how to tell people why to vote. And I wanna correct a lot of things, but I don't want to right now. Well, it'll have to come at a different time. I just want to encourage everybody that if you have questions, contact a committee member. Their names are on your flyer. Contact a council member. Space is an issue at the police department. Security is a bigger issue at the police department. And if you're in the lobby, Sandy's right, when they bring prisoners through, it's not a secure place, and then they take them through the hall. And when you have prisoners in the holding cells, and you're in dispatch, and you watch them pace, it's kind of a nerve-wracking thing. But I just want also, I want my thoughts to come together. Please know that we've come a long ways. Please know that when the city first proposed the $19 million, and then the ballot came out and it was less than that, and then the next time it was 14.9 and the bond was for 12.6, that's pretty much where we are now. And this, we haven't hid anything from anybody. When Think presented theirs, it came at 12.4, which was pretty close. And then when you get all the donors, and you get the impact fee money that is gonna be donated, and you look at value engineering and everything that we can do, that's how we got to the 9.5. It's not because we are hiding anything, and it's not because we're not transparent. And if you have any questions, you can look up anything on YouTube, Public Safety Building Committee, and you will find it, and you can listen to Jim Allred talk about remodeling. You can listen to him talk about how expensive that would be when we have to house dispatch and the city offices somewhere else, it would cost over a million dollars. That's February 3rd, I believe, or February 10th, you can go back and look at that. Another important meeting that you might wanna check out is August 17th, and any of the later meetings, the minutes are online, please go watch them if you have questions, because it's there, it's available for every citizen to look at. And I think as we went through the committee process, not many citizens showed up, and I think it's okay because we have access to all those things, but I don't think the cry of transparency can happen if you haven't done your homework and looked or asked, because I think it's there. I'm very grateful for the mayor, I'm very grateful for his leadership, and for the battles that he tried to heal. We, it was not fun. It was not fun to be a committee member, and it was not fun to dread coming every other week. It was awful. And you need to know that we worked, and you need to know that we worked with the council. And please do your due diligence. Please look it up, and then vote. Vote your conscience, it's your freedom.
Thank you, Molly.
Hi, Kristy Belt. I thought it was fun. I can't wait for the next Wednesday we get to meet as a committee. I wanted to clear up a couple of maybe questions or misconceptions. Talked about, we did discuss in the committee remodeling the police building, the cost, and some people still wanted to look at it, but the cost was similar to building new, and there would be an additional cost for the city in finding a building for the city employees to work there, to have another place to work. So that's kind of where our thoughts were and why we didn't go down the remodel of the police station option. Not that it's too old, but the form and function doesn't work, and that, just the cost didn't make sense. And I'm speaking for myself and not for the committee, just FYI. And then about the place, and I have a favorite place, but that's just it, it's my favorite place, and I have reasons behind it, and I'll share them with you if you wanna come and ask me. But I also have bigger concerns that are for safety, and there are good points, which each location at the fire department, I voted last week, I voted for the public safety bond, which I realize is a shock. But either place that it is, I decided it doesn't matter to me, because what matters to me is that I have, that there's someplace safe for the firemen to work that has the form and function that can keep my children safe, and that's my number-one safety concern. That's why I wanted to be on the committee, that's why I came every other Wednesday for sixteen months, for hours and hours, was because I need some, I need a place for people to be who are gonna keep my babies safe, and that would be the policemen and the firemen. And I realize there are still problems with roads and water, however, my teenagers have learned to miss the potholes when they're driving, but if there's a fire or we need the ambulance, they haven't learned how to save lives of my family members. So I agree that we should vote. I voted for the public safety building, thanks.
Thank you.
Blaine Thatcher, 120 North, 1400 East. Thought I would just make a couple of points. I have been a little maligned, taking the stance that I have taken. But, you know, we're all entitled...
We're still friends, Blaine.
We're all entitled to different opinions, right?
Right.
And I don't know why we need to attack one another for having a different opinion.
That's right.
You know, we can even view facts differently. Couple things were brought up here earlier. Linden took a little bit different approach than Pleasant Grove has. They spent the year before they embarked on their building scrubbing their budget and reducing their cost of operations so as to reduce the burden on their citizens. They began their process at $175 a square foot, okay? Now they may wind up higher, but where did we start? Well, it was higher than $245 a square foot. We started well over $300 a square foot, okay? And we've continually brought that down, and I think we've duly acknowledged that. But I don't understand why we would embark on this year at $245 a square foot and then struggle to be constrained to a budget of $11 million. Another point was brought up about the percentage tax increase. If you noted, I listed a question mark by that tax increase, because we don't know what it is. As a matter of fact, the city has not disclosed that information and is required to do so by law. That seems to be a glaring omission. The other general bit of information that I would like to point out is the process that the committee went through in discussing the bond amount and a budget amount, it was very clear, if you pay attention to that discussion, that most of the members of the committee felt that the budget could be significantly less than the $11 million. And again, to date, I have yet to hear any significant commitment towards putting serious efforts into really reducing that budget. Rather, we're rushing ahead to get a bond amount, and I suspect we'll rush to issue bonds if this is passed, and fully draw down on that before we get to the process of really trying to get down to what can we construct this project at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Blaine. Okay, anyone else? No.
Drew Armstrong. I guess I don't need to give you my address.
No.
I've worked hard to try to get this passed. I didn't vote for it the first time, but I voted for it last year, and I worked hard on that. I thought that the work that had been done in the hundreds and hundreds of hours and of citizen time and professional time was adequate to go ahead and do this last year. And, you know, if we can all remember, that bond only failed by three percent, our bond election last year, and it was just barely, we've reduced it a little bit, but I think we looked at it and we brought it down as much as we possibly could, and really, we're planning on a little bit smaller building. We found a few places with the committee, and I really appreciate all their time that they've spent looking at this very, very carefully and reducing it a little bit. I also appreciate the fact that we have some citizens here in Pleasant Grove who are willing and see the problem that we have and the controversy that it's created for our city, and are willing to go ahead and have committed to contribute $2.2 million towards this. And that's the reason that the bond amount is reduced. It's not because we found all kinds of extra room in the budget, because we were frivolous before with the bond last year. It bothers me that when, in this process, you get to have somebody that writes a position that's an opposing position to the city's position, and, you know, I want everybody to understand, the city's position has come to because we put together the Public Safety Committee, the mayor did, and Wayne Newman, and Tracy Scott, and Molly Andrews, and Jan Van Orman, and Kristy Cash Belt, and Jacob Such, and Trina Visard, and Jason Hunter, and Randy Coomer, and Andrea Snow, and our city council, all of them, I think all except one who was not there, came to a unanimous decision that this was the right thing for our city to do. And it bothers me that you can put information out there with question marks or with inaccurate numbers. Linden City is building a smaller, building more space per resident than we are, they're spending more money per resident than we are, and they're building a less capable facility because they're not addressing courts, because they have courts that are nicer than ours now over in Linden, and their city is one-third our size. And so they're not building that, they outsource their dispatch, and they don't have administrative offices for their fire department. It's a very, very different situation, and it's ridiculous to compare it.
Thank you.
Guy Fugel. You know, I appreciate the time and effort that's been put in over the many months, the Public Safety Committee, and what they brought to us, I understand it more than I did before. And there's one thing this evening I've gotta bring up, I'm really offended that we still have opposition to this bond. We have many other things to work on in this city, to work on together, and many other problems to solve and whatever, and we've, it's like beating a dead horse. You know, we need to move on with this, and I don't know why everybody's not 100% behind this, because it's taken me a lot of years to get my two children back here, living in this, and my eight grandchildren, and this really is for them, and it's for their safety, and then we really need it, and it's beyond time, and we don't have any more time to, down the road, to beat this to death anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Hong, 992 East, 100 North.
Debbie, how do you spell your last name?
H-O-N-G.
Thank you.
Like Kong Kong. I am for the bond, and if anything about needs is that they don't go away, and this will be the same need if we don't pass it this year as it was last year and the year before, and it will be the same need next year and the year after, and forever until we pass bond. So let's just pass it, let's stop being silly, let's just pass the bond. It's a good price, the committee agreed unanimously, what else can we do? They were for, there were some for and some against, and they had strong positions and they met in the middle, so let's get there, let's do it this time, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, next? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close the public input at this time. But I would like to pause for a moment and just acknowledge the comments from you, the citizens. Blaine and I are friends, and I wrote this today privately to someone else. But I'm gonna say it publicly because I don't think this is really known. Blaine and I have known each other for over 20 years. In fact, we worked together on a volunteer project. That's how we met. He was in charge of the finance, good thing, and I was kind of over the whole project. Our daughters have been friends through school. They earned college scholarships together through science fair, state competition. And I didn't discover that the daughter and the father and Amy were all related until they came through for my daughter's wedding, and they were standing in line together. And then it kind of dawned on me. Blaine and I don't agree on everything. If you put me as a conservative and then you line Blaine up, I'm probably considered left, even though in my own mind, I'm right. I'm not right as in correct, but right as in conservative. But I respect Blaine's right as an individual and as a citizen of the United States of America to have an opinion and the freedom to express it without fear of retribution. And I think that that is a right that we ask our servicemen and women to defend when they go out and fight for our Constitution. Recently, I read the Presidential Oath of Office and the Servicemen's Oath of Office, and they are not the same. The servicemen pledge to defend the Constitution against all powers, foreign and domestic. And there are other things the president does not. So Blaine is gonna remain as my friend, and we're gonna have our own conversations. And we have talked over the last year and a half to two years about this subject. We just don't necessarily see the same thing the same way. Now, as far as what we've heard tonight, mostly I think what I'm hearing is there is a lack of information. There's a lack of maybe consolidated information that people can't get their arms around or don't know how to find it in a concise way and be able to read through everything. And then to be able to sit down in a calm way with somebody that knows and actually have a conversation without being criticized for their view or opinion. I'm gonna offer myself and make myself available to you. If anyone wants to sit down and do that, I think I am as knowledgeable as most people on the committee about what went on. And I'd also invite you to read my Facebook page. I have been posting over the last two weeks, subject by subject, with details in there so that you can read and find out about the budget. You can find out about donors. You can find out about construction costs. Recently, I posted one where I took the minutes from the city council at Linden when they approved their budget and their square footage for this building. And I laid them outside by side. I also took the census records for the size of the cities and laid those outside by side. Square miles, area, number of people served, households. And if you just go through that and look at them, what you're gonna see is the city of Pleasant Grove is almost three and a half, four times the size of Linden in population and households. Not in mass of area, but in numbers of people serviced. You can draw your own conclusion from that as far as what it might mean in terms of city services to service those needs. I think the questions about where the money is gonna be spent and what the caps are going to be are... They're actually very germane. And if we don't know now that commitments have been extended by the council and by the staff and by the committee that was present, and the architect said it was possible, that team of people came up with an $11 million construction cap. That was the maximum amount of construction dollars that we're gonna go into this. And not to exceed a $9.5 million bond, and both of those were or less if possible. There's a long explanation on the website as to how that works and how you might reduce those costs. But I encourage you to read that as well. I didn't hear anybody question the need for the facilities. I think we've perhaps reached the point where there is general recognition. And right now, it seems to be the lack of information, a lack of tangible, concise data, is preventing everyone from actually getting their questions answered, whether that persuades them to vote for this or not. So again, I would encourage you to come and see me. Call me, 801-376-1444. You could probably get my phone number if you call City Hall. And I would be happy to sit and meet with you. I'm just offering that to you. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
As well, I'd like to offer email number, you know, all the... I'd be happy to meet with anyone about that. Also on our website, we have a list of frequently asked questions that Mrs. Roy, I believe, will answer several of your questions regarding the bond amounts. There's also a chart on there that's not listed out in percentages, but dollar amount per month of how much the bond would be for the taxpayer based on your home value. And it's within ranges, so you can also see that on the website as well. A mailer also went out with that information. And then you can also see every Public Safety Building Committee meeting from the past 16 months, a live stream and actually what happened during those meetings on the website as well. But if anyone would like to meet or talk, I'd be happy to offer myself as well.
All right. Unfortunately, the whole evening can't be dedicated to this subject, or we could have Q and A and maybe answer some of the questions. Okay, so item 9A then is actually from item 9 or 10C. And this is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-044, authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Ivory Homes. I think we moved it to 9... Yeah, we moved it up. With Ivory Homes for the Avalon Hills Platte subdivision. We can pause for a sec if people want to leave, if that's okay. We just ask that we do it quietly.
Marty can't leave.
No, you can go, Marty.
I'm hired.
While we're waiting for Marty to get to the podium...
Can't hear you, sorry.
Sorry, while we're waiting for Marty to get to the podium on this to let the mayor and council know that there are a couple of items that still need to be taken care of with the development agreement and the plat signing. So when it comes time to make your motion, Marty will explain the conditions, but the motion needs to be a conditional motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And this is located approximately 900 South Loder Ave for the storm drain piping system and providing for an effective date. Marty, are you presenting? Where'd you go? Oh, Ken.
I will briefly introduce the plat that the development agreement is associated with, and then I'll turn it over to Marty. So this is a final plat for Avalon Hills subdivision, which is located in the general area of 889 East, 900 South, 34 lot subdivision. So as you can see, there is a large piece of ground in the middle of a fairly developed area, which is undeveloped. And so focusing in on that, it's in the R19 zoned area. And there are several connecting streets on all sides that will lead into this subdivision. As you can see here, we've got on the northwest area, two connecting roads, one on the southwest area and one on the south, and then another one over here, kind of on the southeast area. So there's quite a few, just a central area where we've got neighborhoods all around it. And then you've got fronting on Loder Avenue, three existing parcels that are being put in as part of this plat because their boundary lines are being adjusted, even though they are developed homes on those three parcels. And it is because of these properties here on Loder that there is a development agreement that is necessary. So otherwise, all of these lots, 34 lots, meet the minimum requirement for lot size and other requirements as per zoning. So if you have any questions regarding the plat specifically, I will say that the preliminary plat was approved by Planning Commission in June. And at that time, there were a little bit of concerns with what was happening with these three lots on Loder, so their recommendation was that those be resolved prior to final plat. So that's where we're at here tonight.
So first, we're gonna discuss the development agreement, and then we're gonna do the plat?
Right, so if we can pass the development agreement tonight, then we can pass the plat. So just wanted to introduce the plat that we're talking about with the development agreement.
Thanks, Ken.
Can you push number five on that white remote?
Ramon?
Does anybody have the white remote?
He's got it. And he pushed it.
Oh, perfect. Mayor Council, so there are two items and conditions that Tina mentioned that we want to make sure are conditions of the approval of the plat tonight. One of them is the development agreement that's been discussed. And I think this, just a quick explanation of the need for the development agreement comes with regards to some off-site storm water work that needs to be done in order to be able to provide an adequate location for the storm water from this development to go. So currently, just-
Can you pause just a second?
Yes.
Are we streaming?
We are streaming.
People, we're getting confirmation?
Yes, I'm getting texts from people.
I could have 10 people watching.
Thank you.
There were issues with the audio at one point, but it seems resolved at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
So with the site development here, right now, we have some storm water facilities that run on Locust Avenue here. They run through the church parking lot and run to what we call the upper main ditch, which is here. And that current facility is at capacity. And connecting to that location would require some off-site work. So there is a few options to do that, and that is to rerun the storm water down here, all the way over to the main ditch, which is fairly expensive. Another one of the options, which is the reason for the development agreement, if you've had a chance to look at the packet, is that we want to take the storm water, rather than down like this, take it over across here. We have the Honeysuckle Development that is installing the storm water to here and then taking it down 1,000 South to the upper main ditch here. And so this accomplishes what we feel is a better alternative solution for that storm water to get to the adequate location that it can discharge. And so if you look at the agreement, the exhibit, I think, is the best thing to look at there with regards to what is being considered. Let me move a little bit to this. Essentially, this is the end of their development on 900 South. The blue line here is the responsibility of Ivory Homes is to get that storm water here, which then is taken by the Honeysuckle subdivision down to Locust Avenue. And then again, their responsibility to get it down to the upper main ditch. The city is participating in all of the design. We've had Horrocks do that design of this work. And we're also participating in, we are going to be paving the trench for that line there. We'll accommodate that with our crews likely, so...
That's our road?
That is our road. Here is 1,000 South, and this just got paved today. And we'll be dedicated with that plat.
No, we have the road. They have the houses on that side, but we have the road, most of it.
Just to mention, this is the old gardener ditch. It does take a lot of irrigation water as well. We are accommodating the irrigation water to flow through that same pipe between 1,000 South and 900 South as well. And it does take a little bit of additional gates and special weers to make it all work. But we've got that worked into the design and talked with the irrigation company as well on that, so... So I'm happy to answer any questions about that. The developer with Ivory is here, Brian Grant.
So we're participating because part of this is our upsizing, or...
There is definitely an overall benefit for us to get water in 1,000 South down to the upper main. So we felt like we should not just say, "Go ahead and do it all and take care of it." So we agreed to do all the design work with that and then also do the paving on 1,000 South for the lower portion.
Okay. And then as far as the piping itself?
That will be done by the contractor that's currently doing the 1,000 South work there. We've already got the amount for this lower portion. I received today the amount to do that, and that's why it needs to be conditional is because Ivory hasn't approved that amount yet. But they've been great to work with. We don't feel like there's gonna be an issue with that. It's just a matter of getting the numbers and finalizing the development agreement, getting that signed and back to you, Mayor, for signature.
Okay. Another question, then. The dotted line looks like it's underneath what's being paved today. So is that already installed?
That has been installed.
Great. And not related to Ivory, how many more feet or miles from where the next dotted yellow line is to the next road, to the part of the road?
To the south here?
North, or to the east, sorry? To the right?
The road's clear up at 1150 east.
Oh, so we have a ways to go.
So there's quite a ways to go, but this will... You know, the storm drain is being installed here now through the Honeysuckle. But you can see that here is our next facility, I mean, next road up 1,000 South.
Okay, and then that's gonna conclude the southern boundary of the city?
Yeah, the south side of the road is the southern boundary of Pleasant Grove all the way along there.
Okay. Are we participating at all with Linden? Are they discharging at all?
Not, no. They aren't party to this agreement. They don't have anything discharging into this.
Other questions? Well, unless it's changed, don't we have the road?
We have the road. We have the road and responsibility for the road. There's actually an interlocal agreement that's pending with Linden to help decide who's going to be responsible for some of the... Well, actually, it's an interlocal agreement with regard to utilities. So some of their residents will be hooked onto our utilities and vice versa in that area. And we're just working out the details of that right now.
Great.
I like it when cities work together on utilities.
Other questions for Marty?
So I guess the condition of this is conditional upon us finalizing this agreement for this off-site work on that. There's one other condition that we need to talk about really quickly on the subdivision. And maybe I can just bring that up now, and then you guys can discuss overall. So the three parcels up here that Ken mentioned currently have homes on them. This middle parcel here and this parcel here was actually part of a larger tract of land that actually came clear back into this area. There were two larger parcels. They went through a subdivision process, and because they did that a number of years ago, I can't remember if it was 2010, so four or five years ago, those parcels are required to be part of the subdivision plat. Originally, getting an agreement with the stams who live in this home here, they've now worked through those agreements, but we are looking for a formal written agreement that they agree to be part of the plat. So the condition that that lot is part of the plat and the ditch, the North Union ditch is piped on that property is the second condition. So two conditions, one on the development agreement, the second, that that lot be included in the plat and the ditch be piped on the front edge of the property. And we feel like we've got what are the requirements for that, but we wanted to verify that before we approve it, so...
Any discussion on this item?
Comfortable with it.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
It's 10B, is that right? No, C, 10C. Mayor Council, I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution 2016-044, authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Ivory Homes for the Avalon Hills Platte subdivision located approximately 900 South Loder Ave for the storm drain piping system and providing for an effective date, adopting the findings and conclusions of staff reports and the conditions as articulated by our city engineer and public works director.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana by voice. Diana? Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay, and now we'll move on to item 10D, which is the 34 lot final plat called Avalon Hills. Ken? Ken, are you leading this one? Sorry, is there anything else to discuss? Okay. Do we have questions for Ken on the plat?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Again, to approve the final 34 lot subdivision called Avalon Hills subdivision located approximately 889 East, 900 South in the R19 single residential, single-family residential zone.
Wait, the, there needs to be a condition on the plat approval that the illegally subdivided lot is included in the plat and that the property owners will submit a written confirmation that they're willing to be part of the plat.
Yes, amend in the motion to include the condition as articulated by city attorney.
Thank you. You'll sack that, okay. We have a motion by Ben, a second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'm sorry, I just probably wasn't paying attention. Did we include the conditions? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna come back now to item 10A, and this is a motion to declare city council's preference of the fire station location. I took the liberty of preparing some information. Yeah, would you please? This is intended to be summary in nature. It's not intended to be persuasive. Yes, thank you very much. What, what I attempted to do is bring together some of the salient points that have been discussed, concerns that have been raised, and issues or discoveries that the committee and our citizens have expressed regarding preference or non-preference for a particular location. So in, in this presentation, we'll go through some of this. We won't go through everything. Oh, good, I took off the detailed budget at the bottom. So the first two items are purely just re, re-presentation of what the architect showed us along with the cost estimates. The response times are going to be what the fire department actually drove from both of the sites to various areas in the city to measure the response times to those areas, depending on where this station would be. And then the concerns are more high-level. They're not, they're not every concern that was listed. I think they capture probably the largest issues that people are dealing with. And if not, we can add them to the list as we discuss. Okay? So what you have here on the left with option one, this is what Think Architecture showed us the potential layout of the site would look like if you put both police court building with dispatch on the top, and then below that would be the fire station. You can see here that in this scenario, it appears that the fire station with its square footage would directly cover the majority of the old rec center. And that could create, that's gonna create the condition which we've been concerned about, and that's losing that building. Okay, and then on the next two, those are supposed to be together because they're option two. The police building would be in the same location that's described as in option one downtown. And that is currently the building that we're in, which is the old fire station with this extension. And then you have the next picture there would be the fire station on the, would that be the southeast corner of 600 West and 800 North. And I tried to get these pictures somewhat to scale with each other so that you could see what the, you know, what it should look like. The building should not look different. The fire station should not look larger at the pipe plant than it does in the downtown area. So this is kind of the, the layout here of what the architect presented to us. Any questions on this? All right, let's go to the next one. These were the initial designs or potential designs that the architect came up with for first and second floors of each of the buildings. The buildings do not change in size or shape, no matter where they're located. And that was important because of trying to keep an apples-to-apples comparison on cost of sticks and bricks. We didn't go with all the cost of road improvements or cost of land because it started to become convoluted and potential for manipulation. So we decided to just stick to sticks and bricks, and that would allow us to evaluate the cost of the buildings themselves. On the, on the left here then would be the police and courts, 29,818 square feet. I believe the main floor, the street level is the top one, and then the upper level is in the bottom. So you can, there's a little bit more square footage on the bottom floor than there is on the top. And I believe that's because of the entryway in the left area, top-left area of the, of the building. You can see the different layouts there, and this is also posted on our website, so people can look at that. On the right-hand side then would be the fire station, 24,034 square feet with the bays, the six bays, and then the lower level, and then the living quarters up on the second floor. You can see the bays actually come up to two stories so that you don't have room for additional office or sleeping quarters on, on that level. Any questions on these layouts? Okay, so those are the floor plans and the site plans. On those same sheets, it lists, well, on, on the detailed budgets, it lists all of the different estimates that the, the architect went through for every one of those designs in that facility on what they might cost. You can see that with the police courts and fire, or police courts and fire downtown, the police court side of this, the, the number is the same, 7,314,876, 7,314,876. That doesn't change. The fire station, however, appears to be about $180,000 less expensive for sticks and bricks if it's built at the, at the pipe plant. And, and I believe that is because of materials or other things that maybe the requirements in that area are not quite as stringent as the downtown. We stopped there because the minute you start getting involved in land, it actually flips the other way. And then there's discussion about, well, what if you took the land value of what's downtown, and that would flip it the other way? You start to get into imagination of numbers, which is, which is, you can make them look like whatever you want, so forget that. Let's just look at the cost of the building. From a construction perspective, or from a dollars perspective, this is, well, somebody good with math tell me, is that like less than 2%? Is that right? Or is it Jason?
Yeah, it's less than 2%.
One and a half percent difference in cost. So yes, it's a large number of money for any of us, but in the, in the scheme of actually building something of this magnitude, a mistake could cause something like that to happen as far as the cost. So that would be the initial estimates that the architect came up with for that layout at those two sites. Any questions? All right, let's go to the next one. On the left side is a map. It's a great tool that one of my coworkers introduced me to. You can actually enter all this info, and it's not Google, Google Earth or Google Maps, but you can post this in, and it'll give you driving routes and whatnot. So number one is where we're currently at. That's the, that's, well, it's actually the proposed site for the new fire station, which would be physically just over to the south of us here. So it has an address on 200 South rather than an address on 100 East. And the fire department drove those to each one of those alphabet red dots. And you can see in the top right-hand table where it says station to each one of those alphabets, A through I, the time and the number of miles that would be driven. I, I would just guess that it's the, the time that's probably the more critical factor for both life and fire. The faster you can get to someone in the first so many minutes or to the home, you, you know, you reduce the risk of permanent damage. And then, of course, number two would be the location of the pipe plant. Same, same thing, driving to the same places. The note here is important, and I've had quite a few people either ask me in person or online, "Why would you do these tests without lights and sirens?" You normally think of emergency response with lights and sirens. And the explanation down here, I don't know if it's in this one, but the explanation that the chief gave me is unless there's, there's an imminent threat to life or property, typically, the fire department's gonna roll their vehicles without the lights, lights and sirens. They're gonna get to the place as quickly and safely as they can. But if, for some reason, while they're en route, there does become an imminent threat to life or to the property, then the lights and sirens go on. Otherwise, if it's a critical issue, the lights and sirens go on immediately. I think that the time is very significant here, the times that you travel from either one of these locations. It's, that, that is a very important point. All right, next slide.
Can I ask a question about that one, Mayor?
Yeah, back up, please.
Could we go back one? I was just curious what the rationale was for each of the red pins, why we picked those spots.
I don't know. Chief Thomas, are you here?
Just through a dart.
Okay.
We're really just looking for a representation of, of a space. We didn't, we didn't look at it as for the size of the road or anything. We just kinda said, "That area, that area, that area." And so we just tried to really spread it out so that we had a good representation of those areas. It's not the furthest or, or the closest or anything, it was just kind of a representation.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was Christie that pointed out to me that I had one of the, one of the darts in the wrong place. And I went back, and sure enough, it was in the wrong place. So we got that corrected. All right, on the, on the sites, on the concerns with site selection, I think we should maybe just walk through the bullets and make sure that they are the ones that people are concerned about. And if there's anything missing, we can, we can consider that as well. If all three facilities are built downtown, the, the immediate concern becomes parking and future expansion. I think when you look at that map or the site plan, you can tell right away there's a limited amount of real estate on the block to be able to fit those two facilities in. The other concern that we heard a lot of from people about this one is the demolition of the old, the old rec center. And I think that, that I put the word "respect" in here because I think that it's as much about respect or a lack of respect in how we deal with this than it is just tearing it down. It's what, what are we expressing and doing to memorialize this facility or to take care of it as opposed to disregarding the heritage that some people feel are associated with that facility. So we've listed there their concerns, loss of cultural heritage and memories, and then also loss of public and private uses, whether they bring in money or not. Those were the two main issues that I heard brought up. It's, it's estimated, as you saw with the construction budget, to be about $180,000 more on sticks and bricks. And one of the things that we discussed to help with space is the closure of 100 South. 100 South would be the road right here in front of us between this building and the current police station. Shut that down, turn it into parking, so you couldn't actually drive through, but that would help with secure parking, public parking and access. Moving over to the police and courts downtown, and then the fire, at the fire station at the pipe plant, you can see that most of what's here deals with the fire station, all of the different issues. Probably the largest concern here, meaning no disrespect to the residents, the largest concern from a public safety perspective is the delayed response times that you would have from the site to some areas in the city. The circuitous, circuitous, I don't know how to say that. Circuitous roots or routes that you'd have to take, east and west, north and south. And, and if you look at the, a map, you can see where 600 West, you know, goes so far, and then you hit train tracks. You go to the north, you cross 1100, and then you go up and it ends 2600 North. There is no way to get out on 800 North if you're headed east. It doesn't go through to 100 East, so you have to kinda either come down around on 4th or go up and around on, on 1100. And those are gonna be primarily through the residential neighborhoods right from the get-go on everyone. That rail crossing, I watched the video, I was gone that day. I watched the video of the chief's explanation of the rail crossing. I didn't realize what he was actually talking about until I watched him talk about it. At 600 West, where the rail crosses the street and Center Street, the concern is actually when you have rush hour, when you have that many vehicles either coming towards 600 headed north or heading off of 600, going out towards the freeway or the rest of the, of the city. Sure, it'd be great, you turn your lights and sirens on, they need to get out of the way, but if the road is full, there's nowhere for, for them to go to get out of the way. And so there is a potential there that you're just creating a bottleneck right from the get-go, something you know about, and that would have to be mitigated. We do not know, and we did not attempt to quantify what improvements might have to be done to the two main roads there to accommodate the construction, let alone any, anything other than just the roads immediately around, around the, the building. And then what we heard mostly from the residents that came and spoke on this matter, they are very concerned about the noise and traffic and the safety for their children around this type of use in their neighborhood, which, which is, they're not familiar with, not, not comfortable with. Did we miss something of significance that you wanna include on these lists? Either pros and cons or one side or the other? I think that's the last slide, right?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, so you can just leave that one up there. I wanna encourage the council to go ahead and have a good discussion on this, and let's see if we can't come to some kind of a decision on where we're gonna head. From what I'm hearing, there are several people in the community, I don't know what percentage it represents, but they're waiting to find out where it's gonna be located before they can get behind supporting a decision one way or the other.
Some questions I have, Mayor. And I asked a few couple of weeks ago, and we hadn't had them fully researched at the time, but I'm hoping that maybe we do have some of those answers. With some of these factors and criteria we've outlined, I think apply on both sides. There's, I think if this location is a residential location in a lot of ways, and we've got homes across the street here and along up into, all the way to Councilwoman Anderson's place.
But we're used to it.
But, but used to it. So a different consideration, but it, it still feels like a residential area to me here. And so one of the questions I had asked the staff was if we could get account of actual, you know, residential doors and schools and school crossings and so forth within a one-mile radius of the two proposed sites.
Did you receive that?
I don't know that we've got that.
No, we don't have that. In fact, in the process of doing that, we, we looked at just basic lots as far as those things are concerned. But, and I, and I apologize, Ben, but I don't have the numbers right with me tonight, but we can get those and get those emailed to the city. I know that there's gonna be a preference declared tonight, but.
Yeah, I'd still like to see those details. To me, there's a decision that needs to be data-driven and thought-through in that way.
Okay, others? The goal would be to discuss the pros and cons or the issues related to the sites. Well, discussion points. And, and to try to arrive at a data-driven solution as to which site are we most likely to wanna put this project on.
I want to make sure that I'm heard, 'cause you know how important that is to me.
Oh, well, just a little bit closer. Yeah.
Okay, how we doing? All right. I don't think it's a shock to anyone. I've been very open and clear about my, my preference. I have looked at, I have tried, I have painfully tried to be very open. And so I think there's just a few things that I've discovered about different locations. First of all, on the MAG 20, well, you can look at- well, you can look at some different, you know, the MAG comes out with their transportation plan, and it goes from the year that it comes out, usually in a 40-year span, projected projects. On every single one of them, light rail is on that track. Some of them say 2030, which I, sounds like Jetson to me, but it's like tomorrow. And so, so not only is that intersection failing right now.
Which intersection?
Center Street and Sixth. So, I was very moved by the comments that the chief made about that intersection. And so, and then when you add tracks to that, or light rail, or whatever, so, they own that track, and we're, we're going to get it. It's going to come down that track, anyway, and then it'll go along Geneva Road. So I've learned about that. The, the comment about build-out and the possibility of another location, I think that the goal all along for the committee was to build this to satisfy build-out. And so I think the only reason that we would ever contemplate adding the expense of another location would be driven by population. I would also note that the dots, so, and I don't know if somebody's going to talk about density, but the density of our city in those dots is also, plays an important factor. Can I, do I keep going or are we still talking?
Whatever you want.
So, I'm not from Pleasant Grove. I'm an, I'm an Air Force brat. So 20, 24 years ago, I discovered what settling your roots was. I, I didn't know what that was because it was foreign to me. And so, I wanted to, I, we specifically bought our house because it was downtown. And Orin mentioned that we've used the public safety. I think it was a deciding factor for us that that was why we moved there, it was a value to us. Along with that, I read in the very first volume of the, the history of Pleasant Grove, which I think if you've read it, it actually makes you become part of Pleasant Grove. So I think I can say that now. But, the old, the old fort, for, for those of you that don't know, and I know that there's some of you who are actually, they, they live, they've lived Old Fort. That's, I mean, there are people in this town that understand what that means. So when Brigham Young came down, talked about there being an Indian war, he, he gathered everybody to the old fort, and it was this four-block area. And then, years later, he said, okay, we've settled the Indian conflict, you can now move out of the fort. Can, first of all, can you imagine all of us living in the fort? It's so much fun. Anyway, and I don't know if it was Beth or if it was Mildred, but they stated that we're one of the only communities left in Utah Valley that has kept their safe place, that old fort spot. So we're very unique in that that old fort, which was the safe place, houses our police and our fire, and I love that. I want to say something about the, the 100-year-old building. It has not been properly maintained. And I don't know at what point, so I think we got it in, was it, what was the year? Seventy... Anyway, somebody old, tell me. Lynn!
I knew that was coming.
Anyway.
And we got it, and?
Okay. At some point, the catastrophic maintenance that we were financing did not match the level of, of, up, yeah, deterioration. So, we were spending this much money and we were deteriorating like this. So we know from the Bowens and Collins report that the old building is going to need 2-point-something million dollars to bring it up to code. I just want to say one thing about that. I have enjoyed that building. My children have played there. We've used it. But, the, I don't know that it's fiscally, so if I'm looking forward, and I'm, I'm actually thinking fiscally responsibly, I don't know that it's fiscally responsible to own and manage an aging events center. Okay.
Well said. Yeah, I understood what you meant, yeah.
Okay. I may have more.
Anyone else?
I'll go next. I've got quite a bit, so I'll, I'll break it up, Diana.
Thank you.
Okay. So I, Mayor, I, I based, first and foremost, I, I based my information off, off facts and the, and I think it was Christie that mentioned it off health and safety. That's the foundation of my, of my responses tonight, is, is the response, the calls, the health and safety of our citizens and then our firefighters. I've got some graphs here, I've got some population demographics, if you want to see them, Ben. I'll, I'll share them here. Chief was kind enough to give me the last three years, 2014, 15, and 16 off their calls. And so what I did is I just drew a magical yellow line right, right down through the middle of the pipe plant, 800 North is what I used. And you can see that the majority of the calls, easily 70% to 75% of the calls are south, south of the pipe plant. And we know that because, and I'll share that with, with, with everyone because of the demographics. But the majority of the calls happened on this south, the southeast side of the city. And if you want to look at them afterwards, I'll be more than happy to share them with you, but you can, you can clearly see that with the, with the location. Now, with the population demographics, I'll just read this and so there's no confusion. Again, what I asked and they, the city provided, thank you, is it Marty? Give it to me, thank you. We just drew a line, 800 North through the middle of the city, and decided to use that because that's the pipe plant's northern side. But I'm going to share with you first the southern side of that line. Apartments, we have 207, commercial, 630. Again, this is this side of the city. 630 exempt, and I, I take that as churches and businesses, is that correct? Schools, sorry, schools and churches. 706, high-density residential, 1,992. Residential, 3,900. Unknown, 17, I don't know what unknown means. Maybe it's tiny homes now, I don't know. But that comes to a total of 70, a little over 7,500, if we want to call them residents, businesses, churches, schools, whatever. Out of that 7,500, 6,100, close to 6,200 represents residents that our firefighters respond to on this side. Commercial schools, churches hit about 1,300. Now, if we're talking north, north of that line, the total was 41, a little over 4,100 total as compared to...
So what's the total to the south?
To the south is 7,524.
And to the north?
To the north is 4,129. Of that, 3,700 was residents of that, of the other part. Commercial schools, churches was 344. We know that because we're dealing with more rural community out north, R120 and RR. It's just, just a fact. I mean, some of it will fill in, some of it we know that we've heard from residents. We have one up here now, sitting on the back grove, so need that they want to keep that RR fill up there, and it won't, it will just, will not change. Or, we'll get quite a few in here that complain. And so that's, that's kind of where I was basing some of my information off of the calls, response, health and safety. Is you can see where the majority of the calls are going is because the majority of the citizens live south of that, of that line.
Eric?
Yes.
Sorry, it's me, Marty. Just, I want to clarify because it's maybe a little bit hard to understand what those numbers are really quickly. So the county, when you own a parcel of ground, they label the type of use on that parcel of ground. So, when you say there's 4,000, and I don't, I don't know all the numbers, 1,800 or so on the churches and schools, those are the number of parcels owned by exempt classifications. Not necessarily that there's that many schools or churches in that area. So we're talking about parcels throughout the city, north of 810 North and south of 800 North, and the classification given whether they're residential, exempt, or otherwise commercial. And that's, those are the numbers that those represent. I just didn't want it to be construed as...
So if we want to just go off residents, I can give you that number.
But were, were the numbers that you gave us for south and north, were those calls?
No, that's just population.
That's the number of parcels.
Parcels, and so what I've got here...
Okay.
Correct. Correct, yep. Parcels that, so we know there's going to be more this, this side, of course, because we know where the high-density are. But if you want to look at the calls, I have that. If people want to look at the map, you can, you just clearly see that it's easily 70% that happen on this side.
You want to pass those out to people? Are they all the same or?
No, they're just the three years. So if they want to come up afterwards and look at them, I'll share, I'll check them out.
Okay.
Yes, the library coming out, me. Access roads needs, again, I think the chief has talked to this a little bit. Travel duration equals distance, supposed to be obstructions, directness of roads, what we're dealing with. And I think we see that with, with, at least to me, what I, when I've written down and driven that area. And I know that area, it's, it's really close to me. And I see the bottlenecks that happen, and I see the dangers that happen on, I think it's 400 and First West. There's a danger there for our fire guys if they're trying to respond. And so that's things that we look at, and, and the conditions that we're trying to put our fire guys into, the railroad crossing we talked about. And so, there are needs and there are really glaring concerns about the, at least for me, for the pipe plant. So I'll, I'll end there, I have a lot more, but I'll let someone else talk.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Lynn.
Mayor, it's, it's been an interesting study for me. For me, I've listened carefully as I know how to do, and would think that you, as the public, would like me to vote in representation of your thoughts. And as I have listened to those thoughts, and tracked them and tracked numbers, if you want to simplify this, everything's weighted very heavily to, people want this thing downtown, very heavily, like three to one, in, in my experience and in the meetings and, and tracking all these. I do think that as we look at this, we do need to take into consideration those things that we heard from the chief and the safety ramifications with this thing, again, points you to downtown. In my opinion, and I'm nobody, but in my opinion, with figures that I ran, if you put everything in and start the discussion on the things we don't have listed, which I don't think we want to do, you'll find that the pipe plant becomes a more expensive option. Cost of the pipe plant is something you need to keep looking at. And I'm not sure, and I think it's the mayor that has made the statement, you know, you're, you're just getting into this thing. We need to get the bond passed and move forward so that we can start planning. You may get into this thing and start taking a look and find out some new facts as you look at the positioning of this that you have to change. And, and I think that could be very real. But that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let me share a few more thoughts. I agree with Lynn that one of the important things we need to do is analyze what the public wants. We're representatives, we're trying to represent the public. My experience has been different in the terms of the comments I've received. And I've been quantifying those. We've had more comments in public meeting in favor of the downtown location, but we've had more comments through the city website in favor of the pipe plant. The majority of the PSB committee that scrutinized this issue favored the pipe plant location. And I have seen and personally received more comments in favor of the pipe plant location than the downtown location. To me, that's a factor, but I don't believe the information I have is statistically a significant sample size. I weigh very heavily the comments of our fire chief and our public safety professionals. That, that, in my mind, has a higher weight than citizens that aren't necessarily making those same decisions every day. But even so, there's some data that has to be analyzed that we don't have, that I've requested. One of the reasons I'm interested in what's in a one-mile radius is because I'm interested not just in, I know it's denser in the south side of the city. The question is, where are the school crosswalks? Where are the churches, where are the schools within that one-mile radius of the epicenter of our two proposed sites? And whether that has an impact on the concerns of safety, the concerns of children playing, the concerns of children crossing the street, what that, what that reflects in terms of where we're really going to be safest. It is cheaper at the pipe plant, that's a significant consideration. There are other costs at both locations that we haven't quantified. That's a concern, that it's not quantified yet. There are, in my view, real parking constraints that are going to be a problem for us here. We have two acres at the pipe plant that we've talked about using. We've got 1.05 acres here at the downtown location for the exact same structure in the fire station. So we do lose a lot of additional space for a more generous turning radius and other things that would be of benefit at the pipe plant. But ultimately, I think the decision that's, and the discussion that's most important is one that we had, recommendation from one of my heroes on the PSB committee, Jan Van Orman, suggested a few weeks ago that what we really need to do is talk about our visions for the future of the city and what, what the goal is. I'm concerned about the loss of people downtown that the old rec currently provides. All those boutiques and dances and activities bring a lot of people to downtown and are beneficial for the downtown businesses. And so I worry about, and wonder about, the impact on strawberry days, the impact on city social events, the things that matter to us here at the downtown and how those will change. And I'm not convinced we've had the kind of discussion on that topic yet that I'd love to have had. And so, I, I would love to hear, if we continue to comment tonight, I'd love to hear a little bit about people's visions and what we're going to do to replace that foot traffic to downtown businesses for the cravings, for the sake of the bistro, for the sake of Coca-Litos. What's, what's going to bring people downtown, the way that the boutiques brought people downtown? And what will be the future of those boutiques? And are we going to lose them from the city forever? And what are we going to do about strawberry days? We've certainly had individual anecdotal concerns from a number of people. We've had people come in and say that the, that the exit out of the fire station, if we put that exit onto 200 South instead of 100 East, will be a concern for them because it comes right out of their house. I've heard a lot of very specific individual people's concerns about noise and traffic and safety. I'm anxious to see some numbers about crosswalks and schools and churches right within that one-mile radius. And I'm, and I'm anxious to have us have a really thorough conversation about vision and what we... I mean, I feel like Diana's articulated one of an old fort of safety, and it's a vision. I worry about parking, I worry about foot traffic to downtown businesses lost by virtue of the loss of our rec center.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Can I speak to some of those? So, thinking about, so let me start with the, the events. I, because I, I do know that there are private event managers in town. We have one on the east side. I, I feel that the event feeling can be accommodated. For example, if you have some large tents, you can have the, at the rodeo grounds. I don't know if you've been to an event in one of the large tents, they're lots of fun, that you, same kind of feeling. I know that Provo, when they have an event at their new rec center, they roll out carpet at the new event center, and then you have the event on top of it. And I know we can accommodate that at the rec center, we have some space. accommodate that at the rec center, we have some spaces that work for that. I also know that because of the pricing for the event, it's the same up at the rec center parking, I think you can accommodate on the west side of the rec center up there. I know at Stonegate, they have ample parking across the street and at the event center. So I don't think that, that, I, I like the, the private entity doing it. I just want to say this, I, the revenue that is produced by the rec center, the old rec center, the beloved rec center, is not sufficient to maintain it. We're not doing, we're not even doing catastrophic, I mean, well, we're doing catastrophic, if a tile, ceiling tile falls, we fix it, but we're not doing maintenance, and it's because of a budgetary restraint. I'm sure that at some point, the, there was just no money to do it. So, did you want to share that, Ben?
No, that's okay.
He just got a text and laughed. Anyway, so I, I, I feel that the event portion of that can be accommodated. I also feel that the downtown feeling will be enhanced. I don't know if anybody's been to the mall at, the university mall, where they have on now the east, the north side, they have that large lawn, have you been there?
Up, University Place.
University Place, up. Beautiful park area, the pavilions, I think if you bring, you know, you can still have events at the, in the park. For strawberry days, you just have the fire guys pull out on First East. So, solved. No headlights in the house.
Anyone else? Did you want to say anything?
Sure.
Okay.
Mine's just pretty brief, I mean, I, I grew up here in Pleasant Grove, so I've lived, you know, the rec center culture for, you know, my entire life, and basketball, roller skating, but based on the health and safeties of our community, and to be fiscally responsible and to honor our heritage in a more respectful way than a dilapidated building as the condition it is in now, then I'm in favor of the downtown location.
Okay, that's pretty concise.
Everyone's kind of summed it up.
You've been practicing that one. That's good, okay. Before we vote, I want to, I want to, I want us to keep in mind that nothing's coming down on the ninth, January first, we don't know how long it's going to take before we actually put a shovel in the ground. There's a lot of work that has to be done in design and in engineering, soil samples, et cetera, before, before you can actually start pushing dirt, and the more effort we put in that planning phase, the more refined the plans are going to be, and the likelihood of errors, mistakes, unforeseen circumstances reduces, therefore, the cost of the project should actually be less. Plus, you don't borrow the money until you need the money, so you're not paying interest on the money until you actually need to, to borrow it. So the decision that is made tonight is mainly to let the public know what this council is thinking the primary location would be for these public safety facilities. And as Lynn said, when you get into it with the architect and the engineers and you start looking under the ground, you might find something that changes your mind, as you really get into the engineering.
I agree, I agree completely.
You might find something looking at the one-mile radius, you might find something looking at something else that's going to sway the decision completely in another direction.
We start digging and there's Indian ruins or there's waste, you, you just don't know.
Right. So the public has kind of asked us to state an opinion tonight, to make a decision, so that they can go to the ballot box knowing what it is the council is thinking, so it's not a mystery. And so that's my request tonight, is that the council take a vote on one of the, you know, in favor of one of these two locations as the primary location, and announce that so that the public can, can do what they need to do.
I could add a few more comments before we take that vote. One of the concerns I have, I've long said that I'm indifferent in location, as long as we can get some unity and we can get a price, a bond number, I'm, I'm pleased with the bond number that's being proposed. I'm primarily indifferent as to location, but I do feel like there are questions that should have been answered that haven't been answered to my satisfaction yet, and I worry about the continued ambiguity of location. I think it would have been timely to get, and, and the more that we talk about the flexibility post-vote, the more concerned I have that people will feel that there's still significant revisions that may happen to our plans to get to a point, and have had people I deeply respect suggest to us that we really should redesign our plans if we stay downtown, to try to fit everything and, and accommodate parking in a way that would be satisfactory. So I'm not ready to express a preference, but I think it's far past time that we should have, but I feel like we can't yet because there's still information that's outstanding in discussions that, on the future of strawberry days, on the nature of, the nature of our need for foot traffic and vision for our downtown, that we should have had. I'm, I'm convinced, like Diana said, there are other locations within our city, we, we may not lose, although the owners of boutiques have written to us and suggested that they would prefer to stay here and would like us to keep the old rec. The, the options are accommodated elsewhere, but I don't know what replaces the foot traffic. And I, I feel like it's not my position to make a statement of preference when we haven't had critical data and discussion yet.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
A few more, sorry, I'd be quick. So on the, really quick, Ben mentioned the website comments, there were some that came in, four or five, they didn't have names on them, right? I don't consider those, I'll just be blunt and be honest with you, I don't consider them, if you're, if you can't put your name on that, I can't consider, because I really don't know who it's coming from. The PSB, it was said that the majority requested a certain site over another, and I, I don't think that's true, maybe you can speak more to that, I, I think there's multiple votes taken, and it could...
It was inconclusive.
Correct. Concerns on schools closest to that, I, I think we heard that night in September from residents on that issue, of the concerns they have for their school kids and the crossings that they have at Six West and other roads nearby. When it said it's cheaper at the pipe plant, I know we're trying to stay away from, from that, but it is what it is, land costs come in and it's going to be more expensive at the pipe plant. Parking issues, to me, again, health, health and safety are at the top of my list here, but when you talk about parking issues, I've talked to, Ken and I have had a brief discussion, I've talked to the chiefs on this, parking really isn't that big of issue when we talk about, when we have space available next to the admin building, next in between the Beck home and admin, that can be turned into, I think Scott correctly guessed, how many stalls?
Thirty-six?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-something.
Okay, thirty-five. Thirty-five stalls, we closed First South down, I think parking is really not going to be that issue, as compared to the past years when we dealt with this, same issue, really wasn't. Vision, we actually had a pretty good vision, didn't we, Ken? We had a downtown twenty-twenty plan, and I think someone referenced it once in one of our meetings, and we were pretty criticized for that downtown twenty-twenty plan vision, because we actually owned land and we had some visions for what we could do. And so because we were criticized for it, I felt that we, we turned around and sold some of that property that could have helped our downtown. We actually had, to me, I, I love the downtown twenty-twenty plan, the, the walkability of downtown, we actually still enjoy that. I've, I've been, and I'll be criticized for this, but I've been to the boutiques and I've watched the, the walking of downtown, a lot of it, they get in their, they get out of their car and they walk to the boutique, and then they leave, all right? There's not, it doesn't push a lot of traffic to downtown as what we would hope it would push it. I, I would, I would hope it would, but it just doesn't. Strawberry Day's concern, I really, again, I really don't think there's that big of a concern for Strawberry Days, where we can readjust in some things on Main Street and for South over here, so just some quick facts, so that's all I have.
Ben, when you say loose foot traffic, are you referring to the people that come in for the boutiques and going to Main Street after?
Or dances or other activities, yeah.
So I asked for a list of activities from Director Giles, and the only city-run events that are there are a junior high dance, and practices for basketball, and a backup for sports league photos. The rest are private events, and I can say that I've been to every boutique that's there, every time, Battle Creek, Holy Cow, Vintage Market, I go every time they're here to support. And most of them, actually all of them, bring in their own food, either a food truck or they have food on-site. And so there aren't a lot of people that are being pushed, they're going to that site for a reason, to shop there, and at other times will go to downtown. So the foot traffic, there's, there's not a lot, just because of the nature of event and because food is already on-site. As Eric said, they, they come and go, it's a destination at that point for shopping, so.
And I don't know if we've ever quantified that through any kind of study to find out, so it's not anecdotal, but it would be nice to know, if somebody wants a cravings cupcake after the big bun that they eat at the boutique, do they go and get a cupcake? I, I don't...
The fitness center.
Then go to the rec center to work it all off, yeah.
Sorry.
I don't know, but it would be nice to have some.
Going to leave that one alone?
Sorry, judgment.
A little levity is probably good right now. Lighten it up. Okay, are there any other considerations that we haven't already discussed or brought forward?
Let's see.
Burning.
Burning.
Burning, really important to germane to the, to the issue that's in front of us.
I love that Ben and I both say we're open to both, but we both...
You're not.
But we're not.
So let's cut to it, let's cut to it so that the public can, can cut to it and spend the next seven days thinking about what their decision's going to be.
I do want to say this, I, the old rec center has a ton of memories for a lot of people, and no, at some point, we're either going to have to come up with three million dollars to renovate it, or we are going to come up with a beautiful way to pay tribute to it and honor it, and I think that that can also be a joyful city celebration.
So, on the matter of downtown for both facilities, or downtown for police and courts and dispatch, and then pipe plant for fire and EMS, or you don't know, or don't want to say it this time, who's in favor of having all three facilities in the downtown? Let's go one at a time, Diana?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Ben?
I'm neither in favor or opposed.
Okay. Should I ask the other question, to see if we have, if you want to vote twice? Who's in favor of having the police courts in the downtown with dispatch and then the fire and EMS at the pipe plant?
I love that it's still a possibility, I love that if there is something that we're digging into or finding...
Your big butt coming.
So I've already said yes.
Okay.
I also love that there is another opportunity if this does not work.
Yeah, so it's a second choice.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a very strong one.
Lynn, same? Sid?
I mean, if it's not viable, but I think that we owe it to the citizens before they vote on Tuesday to know where the location is.
Right.
So if it's not viable, then of course we're going to, but I think that should be that that's what it is at this point, if that's what the majority vote is.
All right. Eric?
Downtown, if it's not viable, then we go to the pipe plant.
Okay. Ben, any?
Neither in favor nor opposed, wishing we had some of the answers to the questions I've asked.
Okay, thank you. So then I guess the decision is that for purposes of the, for identifying a location for the bond, we will advertise to the public that the majority of the council is in favor of having both facilities in the downtown location, as has been suggested, and no one has expressed a primary preference for having them split between the downtown and the pipe plant, so that would be a second option if necessary, but that's what we'll advertise. Okay? All right, ten F would be, just, just in case you might have missed it if you came in late, the discussions on the pros or the arguments in favor and against and rebuttals were already, already had, as were the public comments on that. So we're now at ten F, which is to discuss, it doesn't say, to discuss Pleasant Grove City participation in the Chamber of Commerce, is this a decision item or is it just discuss?
Oh, it's a decision item.
It is, okay, because it's, it's not listed as such.
An action item, ready for vote.
Yeah, action item.
Thank you.
We talked about this three weeks ago, we had a in-depth discussion on the level of participation in which the Pleasant Grove City would have with the Chamber of Commerce. In the past, the Chamber of Commerce, we would provide the employee, so this was a funded employee by Pleasant Grove, which started out initially to be David Larson, who was a full-time employee with our community, he would spend half his time with the Chamber of Commerce, sorry, half his time with the Chamber of Commerce and then other parts of his time with other city business. We, at one point, we moved David, you know, all of his time into another area of the city in which we needed a lot of attention, and we hired James Dixon on a part-time basis in order to provide that service. Again, he was a city employee with his primary function being taking care of the, the Chamber of Commerce. James has left and took another job, so we're a little bit of a crossroads as to how to, in essence, fund this position, as far as the use, or whether we wanted to hire another city employee, or whether we wanted to work in conjunction with Linden, and in essence, combine the chambers of commerce and create a pool of money that we would give the discretion to the chamber, and then they would hire an individual. Our financial commitment in the past has been eighteen thousand dollars for the personnel part of it, and then two thousand dollars as a community partner in the chamber. When we talked about this three weeks ago, the recommendation from staff was to stay with the eighteen thousand dollars and, in essence, write that check to the Chamber of Commerce, and then, and then continue our two thousand dollar contribution as well, as far as being a community partner in the chamber. The chamber in turn would take that eighteen thousand dollars, combine it with the money that Linden has put forward, and use that to hire a person to, to run that chamber. They have talked with American Fork about all three, three cities combining, not creating one chamber, still having two separate chambers, but maybe sharing people again as a cost-saving measure. When we talked about it last time, I think the council felt pretty good moving in that direction, but we needed an action item, so we moved it to the week after, which was two weeks ago. That was on the heels of a large public hearing, so we continued the item to today. David Larson is the one who normally handles this and is able to answer questions, he had a family emergency that he had to take off, so I, I don't know if there's any questions, I know when we talked about it a few weeks ago, we, I think we answered a lot of the questions, Linden was here to represent kind of where they were at, so what's in front of you? This is, this money's already budgeted, it's not, we're not asking for a budget amendment, we're just seeking the will of the council on how that money is to be used.
How does eighteen thousand?
Yeah, eighteen thousand for the, for the person, and then the, the two thousand dollars to remain as a community partner, so it'd be twenty thousand dollars altogether.
Scott, one of the proposals I made when we first talked about this issue, particularly in light of some of my colleagues' resistance, was that if we are paying twice what Linden's paying, maybe we should have twice the representation on the board. I still like that idea, that we would have two, two representatives serving from Pleasant Grove City to make sure that our twice as significant financial contribution to our neighboring city is guarded in a way that's in the interests of our city. Is that in the language that we're discussing tonight?
It's not, but if you, if the council wants to make that as part of the language, you absolutely can do that.
And Lynn, in my sense, was, was favorable to that, willing to pursue that approach.
Can you clarify, because I don't think... Can you clarify? Because I don't think any of us opposed that idea when you offered it.
No, I don't. I meant resistance to the, or concern about the disparity in the contribution Pleasant Grove is making versus what Linden was making. I don't, I don't know if there was any opposition to that idea. I think it's a, I hope it's a, an idea that we all like.
The proposal would be that it's a two-to-one representation.
Yeah, that we get two, two seats on the board of the Chamber of Commerce as Pleasant Grove City in, in recognition of our doubled financial contribution.
So when, when you, I'm, I'm not sure that I heard this correctly. Are, are we talking about one chamber or two chambers?
One chamber combined with Pleasant Grove Linden. It would be called the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce. So one chamber.
All right.
So one thing is I don't sit on the board. I'm just a representative. So when I go, I just sit there. I don't vote. So the board is, consists of business owners that are serving their term.
And my impression from the discussion is that would change.
That's going to change.
That we would have two
No, that's, that's not what has been discussed between Pleasant Grove and Linden. What I'm hearing Ben say is that we would like representation, so if the city council says we want to ensure representation, then contingent on us giving you the $18,000 or the $20,000.
That we actually sit on the board and vote?
Maybe I, maybe I missed this, but I believe when I was here for one of the meetings and Linden representatives were here, I think this item was discussed.
They did. We talked about
Correct?
Yeah, we talked about
Same?
Board representation. They indicated they wanted one. When I was the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce during the year that I was over economic development, we had the Pleasant Grove Ambassadors of Business who had a seat on the, on the board. And so our, my role at that time was a little different maybe than yours is, but I think there's value in having two seats.
What I'm hearing Diana say is currently we do not have a council member that's on the board that has a vote.
Yeah, by
So if we wanted to say, all right, if we're going to do this, we want two council members on the board and they have voting power, that's when we talked about representation, because we do, they're on the board, there are already, I think a Linden businesses on the board, but most of them are Pleasant Grove businesses, so. And it's, it's more than three people. It's, you know, nine, 10, and maybe 12. I can't remember the number that the chamber has, but there's
I'm pretty sure it's 12.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of people that are at the table. So if we're saying out of that board of 12, if we are participating and we want two council members on that board with voting power, then that's, I think that's what we say.
Right. And the Pleasant Grove Ambassadors of Business had one voting member on the board for the ambassadors' effort, but it doesn't, in my view, wouldn't have to be the council members. We could designate somebody else if we didn't think that was a good use of our personal time or, or available to us, but I think we ought to ask for two seats on the board.
Yeah. I mean, currently, and this is at the request of the board, was when David left as the director, they asked him if he'd be a board member. I mean, they're the ones who appoint the board members. We as a city don't.
Right.
We have a liaison to the board, which is a council member, but again, not a voting member. David currently sits on the board. I think to that point, Ben, it could be council or staff or whoever the council would want to appoint to say, you are a PG rep and we want you on there.
I think one of the reasons why they, Linden approached us or we approached them was that they want, and I think Mayor talked to us a little bit last time, is that they wanted to have their own little, right, they wanted us to pull back a little bit, so it's not so heavily weighted, so they, so they're their own entity. Am I wrong?
No, what they have said is if you continue to have this be a, a city employee that's running the chamber, we're not interested in putting our money into it. If you are willing that it can become the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce, we'll put in our $10,000, you put in your $18,000, then we use that money to hire a person that the board directs and supervises. So when it's James Dixon, when it's David Larson, their reviews were done by, by us as a city. They were, I, I'm sure the, the chamber had, they didn't control the person's pay. They didn't control certain aspects of what they did. And that's where Linden looked at that and said, eh, that's probably a little bit too far than we're willing to go, but if we can bring it back to these terms, we're willing to put our $10,000 in. So that's what kind of led to that, if that's what you were asking, Eric.
That sounds correct to me, is what the discussion was. I think it's been four weeks.
Yes.
Three or four weeks, so. Council, any other comments or questions? So we're voting on whether or not we would put in this 18 plus two to remain, to remain as a member. So that's 20K. We would be requesting two city-appointed representatives for the board, whether they're council members or staff.
I think at that point, it's, it's just a mayoral appointment with advice and gets out of the council like we do Fox Hollow and all these other boards that we have people on.
But we haven't, we haven't, we're proposing this, right?
Yeah, and I don't, I, I think they represented they wouldn't have a problem with that if we did it that way. They would probably have one.
And then this will be reviewed on an annual basis?
Yeah, at any time. I mean, this is a, it's a, it's an annual budget item. If at any time the city council
Yes.
Yeah, if any time the city council says we're unhappy with how this is functioning, you have an ability to remove that funding.
Yes.
All right, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd love to make the motion. Which number is it?
10F.
So, what if
20,000 and two board members, voting members appointed by the city.
We participate in the Chamber of Commerce for 18,000 plus 2,000. Anything else you want to add?
And two voting
And two voting
Board members.
Board members.
Second.
Okay, motion by Diana, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Nothing on 11. We're going to review November 9th. Not sure I got a November 9th. Do we have a November 9th?
Mayor, we, we
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we didn't have a, we
We didn't have a regularly scheduled meeting.
Officially create a meeting for November 9th because we have business that needs to be conducted.
Yeah, so with Kathy being gone, we have not put that agenda together. Her and I are sitting down tomorrow to put that agenda together, but and we'll get that out as soon as possible, so you know what's, what's on that agenda, but we will need a, and she'll officially notice the meeting because we, we're not planning on having a meeting that night.
Okay.
And that's a Wednesday night.
Yeah, it is a Wednesday. It's the day after the elections.
It's a league, it's a state requirement, right? You cannot have a, on a voting day. Okay. All right, staff business, Libby? Ken? Congratulations.
Congrats.
Eight times today, huh? Very good. Boy or girl? Very good. Congratulations.
This isn't great yet, is it, Ken? Not great.
It is a great home.
Well, you bet.
John, anything? Want to skip Guy and Marty?
Just a few items. Construction season's getting to the close here. Garden Drive, we hold the final walkthrough tomorrow on that. It has been paved and put back together. 4,000 North, I was out there this morning. They had placed the last manhole in the street and had four or five other laterals to finish up. And then that project will be coming to a close pretty, pretty soon here as well, so. We're looking forward to being done with a little bit of the construction. Still got a lot going on. And next year is going to be a very busy season. Lots under design right now, so.
Very good. Thank you. Dion? Nothing? Chief? Chief?
One thing, for the next few days, you may see us operating over here in a parking lot. We're just doing our fall fitness test. Council's certainly welcome to come over and go through that with us.
PST.
ATSD.
ATSD. What did I say, PSB? Oh, same thing.
Yeah, we'll be doing that in, in the mornings and in the evenings and, and council mayor, you're totally welcome to come over, throw some turnout on, climb that 100-foot ladder truck and then do the rest of the exercises. It's maybe what, six, seven minutes out of your life.
Thank you so much. Those are six or seven minutes that I will value somewhere else in my life. I appreciate that.
But that's what we're doing.
Okay. I can't see who's sitting right here. Yes, Denise, nothing? Sherry?
Just a little update on the elevator. We, this second bid round came up way, way, way too high. So we're going for round three, probably Friday. We did have the, the company that bid in the summer didn't get theirs in, tried and had some kind of technical problem. So we're hoping they'll try on round three. So we'll submit it, open it up on Friday, give them two weeks. And hopefully, third time's the charm.
That's great. It'll be good when it's, when it's done. Tina, anything? Scott?
No.
Barbara?
No.
Diana? Lynn? Sid?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief Smith, I, I told him I would start after the 30th with the No shave November. No shave, so here it comes. So just prepare.
Is, is that what that is?
Yes, it's one day.
I was just wondering.
One day's worth. So it's kind of, I challenge anyone else, 50 bucks to donate to a good cause.
My, my one day, Eric, was so bad that I was embarrassed to cut it off.
Joey's got his starts, we're good.
Did mine for a truck and it was terrible. I had Nathan Ivey out to my law office earlier, well, just a couple of days ago, and have spoken with Bill Lee and also exchanged some messages with Greg Graves about the Canyon Road issue. I've got some thoughts and perspective on that, so I'd invite colleagues on the council, if you have interest in hearing about some of those conversations, I think we've, I, I think we've got some reasons to, to follow what Cedar Hills did when we have that discussion next week.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any Platts? None? Okay. I don't have a calendar in front of me, so next week we have voting on Tuesday, the 8th, followed by council meeting 6 o'clock on the 9th. I just want to say before we go into executive session, I want to thank the public, whoever's left, and those that are online listening. That was a really good representation tonight. I, I'm particularly pleased that people were able to speak and feel pretty comfortable getting out what they wanted to get out. And I thank the council for also doing the same and making a decision that the public can react to when it comes to the location of the, of the facility. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss Okay.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, Council, that we go into executive session to discuss reasonably pending or imminent litigation.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, motion by Ben, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and when we come out, we'll make
I'm going to eat this bread in the executive session.